If I could have your attention, please. Stand and say the pledge. Leading the pledge today is Lieutenant Colonel Joan Horowanis.
You want me to do it?
Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll be drunky.
I have five minutes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Just so everybody knows, you know, Joan's here every week or every month, and she goes to a lot of the meetings. You know, she's got 22 years in the U.S. Army as an intelligence officer with -- she's had many awards and service medals and commendations, so thank you for your service.
I'll call this meeting to order at 10 o'clock. This is a continuation of the January 22 meeting. We'll reconvene us and have a reading of the ordinance 20 -- second reading, 200018.
Ordinance 264, an ordinance for the county of Lackawanna, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, fixing the tax rate and enacting the budget for year 2020, and appropriate specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the county government herein after set forth during the current fiscal year, be it ordained, enacted. Enacted is hereby resolved and enacted by the Board of Commissioners of County Lackawanna, Pennsylvania. Section 1, the tax B and the same is hereby levied on all property within said county subject to taxation for county purposes for the fiscal year 2020 as follows. Tax rate for general county purposes, the sum of 47.60 mils on each assessed -- each dollar of assessed valuation, or the sum of 476 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. For debt purposes, the sum of 12.50 mils on each dollar of assessed valuation, or the sum of 125 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. For the purposes of the county library system, the sum of 2.82 mils on each dollar of assessed valuation, or the sum of 28.20 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. For the purposes of the cultural and education fund, the sum of 1.0 mils, or the sum of 10 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. Total millage for all purposes of the sum of 63.92 mils. Section 2, all prior ordinances or resolutions or parts thereof inconsistent herewith are repealed.
Mr. Chairman. The ordinance is one that no one is particularly comfortable with. It is something that's absolutely necessary due to the circumstances we were left. It's not meant to spend additional funds. It's meant to pay all debt. It's to pay a pension plan that has been underfunded. We spent an hour and a half yesterday with an actuary who explained in depth why what we've been doing has been wrong, and we -- and everyone questioned him in a different way to try to get to a different answer. It's kind of asking the same question over, just in a different context. To, you know, "Well, what if we do this? Will that work? Will that solve this?" And the answer was continually, "No." CFO Tom Durkin is here. We have had a deficit budget, operating budget, for the last few years. We have spent the surplus for the last few years. We need to maintain a minimum of 10% of our operating budget in order to secure a proper bond rating to go forward. There are a couple. There's a bank loan and a bond issue that we can refinance and save money going forward if we maintain our bond rating. That is conceivably in jeopardy. That's -- that was a question that one of the commissioners brought up, saying, "Well, can we find that out prior to it?" And the CFO, CPA Tom Durkin, explained, "No, you can't find that out in advance until you actually apply," from Standard &amp; Poor's. This is not something that anyone is comfortable doing to -- at all. I didn't wake up one morning and decide that I'm, geez, I think I'll go raise taxes. There was a letter to the editor this morning saying, "I would like the commissioners to publish or make available their personal tax bills." I am more than willing to do that. I am relatively sure that I pay more real estate tax in Lackawanna County than 80% or 90% of the people in this room. I am not a wealthy person. I just ended up, over the years, with some property. Owning property in Scranton isn't particularly beneficial at this point. Part of what we have to do as a taxing body, as a government, is we're required to provide certain services. We have no option. You know, we have to have a court system that we're obligated to run. Children and youth, area agency on aging, a county jail system. All of these things are a 911 system. All these things cost money. And again, it's not something that we -- we're not borrowing money or raising taxes to increase spending per se at all, but to pay back bills that should have been addressed during the course of the last four years. The Globe Store, for instance, was a building that was looked at by two sets of commissioners prior to the last set, and they both walked away from it. Both sets of commissioners walked away from it because they did not see it as being feasible. We are at a minimum of $5 million over budget on this building as of today. This is far from finished, this building. We absolutely have no option but to try to right this ship and move forward. In order for people, in order for us to go forward to businesses throughout the community, throughout the state, throughout the country, they have to believe that we are doing the right thing. I think the school district is heading in the right direction. I think Scranton is heading in the right direction now, and I need -- and we need Lackawanna County to be a part of that. We -- the timeframe that was given to us by the administration, the past administration, was we have 30 days to act because tax bills need to be sent out. We can't put together a program to increase economic development and increase our tax base in that amount of time. We are going to do everything we possibly can, and we're going to work very hard at it, and I think we'll be very successful in increasing our tax base, in attracting businesses when they believe that you have a responsible government, both in the county, the city, and the school district. Here to address the current situation is our CFO, Tom Durkin. The Wednesday after we had our first commissioners' meeting, we had a reorganization meeting on a Monday. We had our first commissioners' meeting on a Wednesday. We had a meeting with Mr. Durkin at 2:00, and he explained more so to the new commissioners than he did to me, because I did have an understanding of it. When one of the former commissioners says, "I didn't attend his budget hearings," that's nonsense. When I did attend, they didn't tell the truth. Mr. Durkin is here. Let him explain to you as best he can, and anyone that has questions for him, feel free.
Thank you, Commissioner. Once again, this is the second reading of the ordinance. If approved, the ordinance will actually implement an amended budget for 2020 with a nominal, I think it's about $87,000, of a deficit after the 6.5 mil tax increase that the budget proposes. The prior budget, the budget that is right now, still in effect, actually, that was approved in November, has a $6 million deficit and no appropriation other than $500,000 to cover the county's pension obligation for 2020. As unfortunate as it is to try to impress upon the commissioners in a very, very limited amount of time, because as you said, we had a narrow window to get this done so that the tax bills could go out, we need to make sure we get tax bills in the constituents' hands in appropriate time so that they have time to pay the bills and perhaps even take advantage of the 2% discount that is offered by the county, the school district. And I saw in this morning's paper that the city now approved the March 15 2% deadline for paying taxes. So I've met with, as you said yesterday, I've met with the three commissioners and a representative from our actuary to talk about the pension plan. I've met with the commissioners on many occasions leading up to this, and as I've said before, it's my opinion that we need to fix this and fix it now. That's what this amended budget does. I am hoping that if we approve this budget, that when we do go to Standard &amp; Poor's for a rating, which will be probably in a couple months, if we're going to do the refunding that we talked about, I'm hoping that this will abate any negative outlook that Standard &amp; Poor's might have, and hopefully we'll be able to maintain our A-stable rating, which is an investment-grade rating, which is very, very important to the county moving forward. I really have nothing much else to say, but if the commissioners or anybody else has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I do. I have a couple myself. So, you know, this is, you know, I started my process here three years ago, and obviously things have gotten worse over those past few years. So we're proposing this 6.5 mil. Does that leave any fluff for moving down the road, or is that just taking care of everything that we're handed as of right now in the budget?
There is absolutely no fluff in this budget. The 6.5 mil takes care of the annual pension obligation, and as we found out yesterday, and I found out myself, that the actuary is actually estimating that the 2020 annual required contribution is more than $4 million. We're budgeting, if we approve the amended budget, we're budgeting $3,872,000, which was the 2019 annual required contribution, which was the information that I had when we put this thing together. So we're still actually not going to make the full annual required contribution, which would exceed more than $4 million. And the fact is, there's not even enough in what we're doing with the 6.5 mils to change the $3,872 that we've budgeted for the pension contribution. If we make the $3,872, while it is not the full arc, the representative from Corrin Ferry, our actuary, yesterday, explained to us that that would go a long way toward potentially decreasing future annual required contributions and certainly not continuing to increase those annual required contributions every year. In addition, the balance of the 6.5 mil tax increase is not quite enough. As I said, I believe it's about an $87,000 deficit that is in this amended budget in the general fund. So it's not quite enough to offset the entire general fund deficit that was in the original budget, which was almost $6 million. And as I've said, there, I mean, there's no fluff, no extra money here. As we discuss at length now, and the three commissioners are aware of this because they've been in more meetings than I've been discussing this, it's now the responsibility of this administration to find ways to do things better. We need to dig very, very deeply into the budget. We need to find potential new sources of revenue, which we have discussed, potential cost cuts that we can find, if any. And again, I'm very proud of the fact that this Board of Commissioners has sat down endlessly with myself and Mary Jo, and we've discussed at length the potential for finding a better way to do county government, and that's pretty exciting for me.
Well, and to my question, so as we move on here the next few years, you know, costs aren't going to go down, so...
That's correct.
And this isn't looking at helping down the road. This is just fixing now. So, you know, it's going to be more important than ever to do an in-depth review of all the departments, make cuts wherever we possibly can, and it's going to be an ongoing thing every single day, and you can bet that I'll be looking at everything that we're doing. You know, last week when I tried to table this meeting to give myself a little more time, I mean, I've been doing everything but staying on my head to figure out how we could not do this. So far, unfortunately, I have not found a way. And I'm not a financial expert, but we've met with all of them. So, you know, I don't want to hear about approving jobs or people that need a job or creating a position. I don't even, I don't even want to go down that road. We need to focus on where we're going to save money, and we're going to focus on if there's somebody needs to be in a spot to do a job, that's one thing. I don't even want to hear about it. So, you know, this is a really hard decision for me to make. This is not what I was hoping that I was going to have to look at the first couple weeks or the first day that I got in here, but you know what? We've got to face facts. They're all facts and figures. You know, this job, to me, is not about photo opportunities and cameo appearances. This is about running Lackawanna County. You know, it's a killer decision for me, but, you know, I see where we're going. So it, everybody's going to have, I'm going to have, every day that I'm in here, which I get here very early in the morning, as you do, it's going to be a full-time job, is saving money and working down the road. So I just thank you for all your work, and I think you've answered all my questions. If I had a magic wand, I'd wave it. I don't have one, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I just had one. I just wanted for clarity. The last time that the budget was, or the pension was fully funded was in 2006 for the year 2005. Is that true?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Okay. So since that time, either the pension has not been funded at all, or it's been sorely underfunded?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Okay. And during those years that that occurred, so the last 13 years, 14 years, we were still given the high bond rating by Standard &amp; Poor's because we had 10% of the annual operating budget. Is that accurate?
Well, no, that's not, Commissioner. The fact of the matter is, in, we had an investment-grade rating up until 2011. In 2011, Standard &amp; Poor's downgraded us below investment grade because of structural deficits that had continued through that point, because of other things that they felt weren't appropriate in the way we're managing county government. In 2015, in December of 2015, after a whole lot of things that happened, including a tax increase in 2012 and another small tax increase in 2013, Standard &amp; Poor's did restore our investment-grade rating, but it wasn't until December of 2015. So we went from, I think it was May of 2011 when we were downgraded, until December of 2015 without an investment-grade rating. We did some borrowing during that period of time, some necessary borrowing, and certainly paid more than we would have had we had the investment-grade rating during that time. And as a matter of fact, we've done some refinancing over the last couple of years. I think in 2016 and '17, we did major refinancings, and the bulk of those refinancings were to get better interest rates on some of the debt that we had incurred in the period of time that we didn't have an investment-grade rating. So we were successful in doing that. But we have had that investment-grade rating since 2015, and as a matter of fact, the rest of your statement is correct, Commissioner. Since then, we have maintained at least a 10% surplus, 10% of the then-current operating budget. We have maintained that since 2015.
So in 2011, when we were downgraded, were we owed the 10%?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
In 2011, at the end of 2011, in December, actually, December 6 of 2011, we did, well, actually, we had to appeal to the courts to approve what's known as an unfunded debt borrowing. Because of continuing structural deficits prior to 2011 and even through 2011, we had essentially racked up about $21 million of debt, current debt, accounts payable, things of that nature, that we needed to pay for. We appealed to the courts, and the courts approved a $21 million borrowing in December of 2011. After we completed that borrowing, our accumulated deficit at the end of 2011, even after borrowing $21 million, it stood at approximately a $600,000 deficit at that time. So it was just a small deficit, essentially, no surplus at all. It was a small deficit. Since then, that surplus has grown, and off the top of my head, I'm not sure how much per year, but since then, that surplus had grown to the point where we had a $27 million surplus, as indicated by this poster, by the end of 2018.
So in 2011, when the, when we were downgraded by Standard &amp; Poor's, we had a higher deficit than we have now? Is that fair to say?
Considerably high.
Considerably higher.
Well, but the accumulated deficit, that deficit meaning that all prior history flows forward to our either accumulated surplus or accumulated deficit. At that time, we had an accumulated deficit of about $600,000.
Okay. And at that point, there was no surplus? Or was there?
There was not. It was a deficit. That's correct.
And at that time, the pension had still not been fully funded since 2006 for 2005?
That is correct, Commissioner.
And when Standard &amp; Poor's downgraded the county in 2011, was the lack of fully funding the pension specifically indicated as one of the reasons for the downgrade?
Standard &amp; Poor's, when they upgrade or downgrade you, I mean, when they do a rating, they don't specify exactly what it was that caused them to make their decisions. They mention a number of things. And I can tell you, in 2011, the pension was one of the things that was mentioned. In addition, in 2011, the 2009 county audit had not been completed until July of 2011. So that was one of the reasons, another one of the reasons, that Standard &amp; Poor's downgraded the county in what I believe was May of 2011, because the audit for 2009, which was due to be completed by September of 2010, had not yet been completed.
So in 2011, when the county was downgraded, they did give specific reasons for the downgrade?
They didn't give specific reasons. They didn't say you were downgraded for this reason. What they do is they do a narrative.
You indicated that we were downgraded for X, Y, and Z. So how did you...
No, no. They give you a narrative and say some of the things that were included in our evaluation, some of the reasoning that we had when we decided to downgrade the county are lack of full payments to the pension plan, the fact that audits are untimely, not being prepared on time. At that time, there were continuing structural deficits, the fact that the county had not reassessed at that time in like 47 years, I think it was.
Okay. So in 2011, then, the, we didn't have a surplus, we had a higher accumulated deficit?
Correct.
We were not doing audits on time?
Correct.
The pension fund was not fully funded?
That is correct.
Audits have, over the past how many years, been conducted in a timely manner?
Since 2000, the 2011 audit was completed by September 30 of 2012, and so that was the first in a string of 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, eight audits that have been completed timely.
Okay. So as we sit here today, then, we have eight audits that have been completed timely. We have a surplus. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
We have a lower deficit than back in, back in 2011?
Well...
Or accumulated deficit?
Again, no. We don't have any accumulated deficit. That's the accumulated surplus that we have, Commissioner. According to this schedule, I'm estimating that as of December 31, 2019, it's a surplus of about $19 million.
I get it. I apologize.
That's okay.
Okay. So we had eight timely audits, a surplus, no accumulated deficit, but the pension fund is still not funded. So can you say with any certainty that if we were to use the surplus to address the estimated deficit, which I believe you said for 2019 is about $8 million, and 2020 is about $6 million? So if we were to take the surplus to address the approximate, or the estimated deficit and not fully fund the pension, would we still be 10% or above?
The estimate, if we make the pension contribution, according to the...
I'm not asking that. I'm asking that if we left the budget the way it is, in terms of the pension, the $500,000...
Okay.
Okay. And we utilize the surplus, which is now what? It's about $19 million?
About $19 million.
Okay. It started a little over $27 million at the end of '18. You expect the 2019 deficit to be about $8 million?
Correct.
That brings us down to about $19 million.
That's correct. And then the $6 million, excuse me, Commissioner, $6 million would bring us down to something a little bit north of $13 million as an accumulated surplus.
Okay. So assuming that we, just based upon what you said, and we were a little north of $13 million of this accumulated surplus, would that keep us within the 10% as required or as...
As recommended.
By Standard &amp; Poor's?
Yes, it would.
Okay. And we can't say for sure definitively whether or not Standard &amp; Poor's would downgrade our bond rating if we were to proceed in that fashion and eliminate the deficit using the surplus, but still stay at 10%, but yet not fully fund the pension. We can't say that definitively one way or the other.
Certainly not.
Is that accurate? But in the past, if we were to look at the last, how many years, when there was a surplus, the pension fund wasn't fully funded, we were not downgraded?
That's correct, Commissioner, but, but over that period of time between 2012 and 2018, we weren't having operating deficits either. Now, in 2019, we did have what I'm anticipating to be about an $8 million operating deficit, and we budgeted approximately a $6 million, without a pension payment, approximately a $6 million deficit in 2020. So that is one difference than what has happened between 2012 and 2018. We were operating in a surplus, annual surplus position. We're anticipating, again, about $8 million deficit in '19, and we're anticipating in the existing budget, without the amendment, a $6 million deficit, operating deficit in 2020. One difference between 2012 through '18 and the current time. One difference between 2012 through 18 and the current time. And again, I can't say, and we've talked about this, Commissioner, I can't say that that would cause Standard and Poor's to downgrade us. I can't say that it would cause Standard and Poor's not to downgrade us.
But, even though we have an operating deficit, we have the surplus to cover that deficit?
That is correct.
Doing that? Okay. And, in 2018, a deficit was estimated, but then it was determined that, what happened in 2018?
In 2018, I believe we budgeted a deficit conservatively, and that's something that needs to be said, too. When we budget, we typically budget conservatively, so that we don't want to, you know, go out and say, "We anticipate having a surplus of $2 million," and then actual operations not coming up to that standard. So, we budget conservatively. But, in 2018, I believe we budgeted a deficit of $1.6 million. Our actual operating results in 2018 resulted in the county having a, an operating surplus of approximately $1 million for 18.
Okay. So, the numbers that you give with regard to our deficit are actually your estimations? And like in 2018, you made an estimate of a deficit, but ended up, we had a surplus?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Okay. I think that's all, they're the only questions I have for you, Tom.
Okay.
So, all right, so, in that scenario, we just use up the budget, or the surplus to cover today and get this all taken care of? Where does that leave us for next year?
Well, as I believe you said previously, Commissioner, the cost of government goes up. The cost of everything goes up. We all have our own budgets that we deal with in our own households, and utilities go up. I saw actually a story on the front page of today's paper where UGI is looking for a $74 million rate increase. The costs of everything, again, government is not like, unlike individuals, the costs of government go up. We have health insurance costs that increase every year, utility costs that go up every year, employee costs, salaries and benefits, all those things increase every year, as you're aware. So, if we didn't do the amended budget and didn't make the pension contribution, and we're correct in our estimate for 2020, we would have a $6 million deficit for 2020. I would expect that, based on what we know from history, that the 2021 budget would anticipate a deficit of somewhere between 7.5 and 8 million dollars. An additional cost of about $1 million and a half to $2 million annually.
Would we still be looking at a 6.5 mil increase, or would that increase as well?
No, at that point in time, it would be closer to 8, 8.5 mils, to cover that deficit in 2021.
And that's-
And, to cover the deficit, excuse me, and to cover the pension plan as well. I mean, if we're not going to do anything this year, then we're not covering the pension plan shortfall. In order to cover the pension plan shortfall, and what I would expect to be a 7.5 to 8 million deficit, we'd be looking at probably, again, 7.5, maybe 8.5 mil increase next year?
So, the problem's not going to go away?
I don't believe so. And, as we've said before, Commissioner, the fact is, you guys are going to work very, very hard this year to try and find new revenue sources, which we've discussed, to try and find ways to mitigate the escalating costs of things like healthcare, salaries and wages, all of those things that are going up. We need to find ways to do more with less, and that's a pretty cliched, trite old statement. But, but that's the way government has to operate. We need to find better ways to do things. And, even in doing so, I would expect that what would be a $6 million deficit, if we do nothing in 2020, would increase by a million and a half to $2 million for 2021.
And yesterday, when we spoke with the actuary, he said there are various state programs where we are reimbursed by the state for some of the offices that we run. And when we don't fund the pension, the pension, they in turn, they in turn do fund part of the pension. And if we don't put any money into it, then the state does not either.
That is correct, Commissioner. If we make the payment, the full payment to the pension, then there are departments, children, youth services, aging, and don't hold me to this exactly, because I would have to go back and look at the details, but potentially even domestic relations. If we make pension payments, there are departments that are at least partially or fully state-funded, where the state would pay us for the portion of the pension payment relative to those departments.
And if we don't make that payment, the state is not getting it.
We don't get any of that money. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, anything else?
Okay. At this opportunity, I'd like to entertain a motion to pass, Order 200018. Have a second?
I'll second the motion. We'll see how the vote goes.
All in favor?
Before voting, I'd like to speak on the question.
Okay. Any question?
Um, I just want to make my position clear. I understand that in reading the comments and talking to residents who have called all of our offices, the residents of the county only hear about a surplus and wonder why, if we have a surplus, then why do we have to increase taxes? But, it's far more complicated than that, as we have learned over the past three weeks in speaking with Mr. Durkin, who's been wonderful in answering all of our questions. There is no doubt that the pension has been underfunded since 2006, really, and that's unacceptable. I think it's our obligation to make sure that our retirees are protected, because everyone who works for the county, we work hard, and the fact that the pension, the pension has not been properly funded, and that we are in this position, i- in my opinion, is unacceptable. I also believe it's unacceptable that we find ourselves in this position, particularly Commissioner Shermack and I, well, all three of us, of course, but in terms of the fact that we just took office three weeks ago, but it's unacceptable for all three of us to have to deal with the situation that is at hand. I would have considered implementing a lower tax increase to fund the pension more than what is being allocated now, the $500,000, in an effort to try to chip away at the problem without crippling the residents. My questions with regard to Mr. Durkin, um, here's where I have an issue. I'm an attorney, so I don't like to deal with things that aren't definitive. I don't like speculation. That's not how I make an informed decision. If we use the surplus that we have to cover the deficit and wait to fully fund the pension until next year, there's no guarantee that our bond rating is going to be downgraded. It hasn't been in the past. While Standard and Poor's may have indicated that they are not happy that we have an underfunded pension, if you look at prior practice, we have not been downgraded because we've had a surplus to cover the deficit, despite the fact that we've had a sorely underfunded and sometimes not funded at all pension fund. So, I'm not 100% sold on the concept that if we proceeded in that way, using the surplus to cover the deficit, staying above the 10% standard, as indicated by Standard and Poor's, that we would lose our bond rating. And that uncertainty, especially in light of the fact that we're facing an 11.3% raise, it poses a huge problem for me. The other problem I've expressed before is the city of Scranton. Scranton residents are going to be looking at an increase for city tax increase, school tax increase. When we talked about that yesterday, one of the commissioners indicated that that is not our problem, and it shouldn't be considered, but it has to be. It has to be considered, because it shows the overall impact on our residents. So, we're not looking, we can't look and just isolate ourselves and say it's going to be an 11.3% tax increase, when, in essence, for Scranton residents, it can be, I think they said, up to 18% total between county, state, and school. I don't want to see people lose their houses. People are on fixed income. We have a lot of middle-income, low-income families that this can ruin. So, I think that it is our responsibility to take everything into consideration when making a big decision such as this. We also have the issue of reassessment. We have a court case pending, whether or not the commissioners and I decide to forego the court case and order reassessment. To be honest, we haven't discussed that because we've been dealing with this tax issue. Or whether we wait and see if the judge issues a decision and orders us to do reassessment. There may be tax consequences associated with that. There's going to be costs associated with conducting the reassessment. Those are other things that I think need to be considered when, again, levying, which I consider a large tax hike of 11.3%. I would prefer to either, or I would have preferred, to either implement a lower tax increase, or no tax increase, cover the deficit with the surplus, and work for the next year at trying to generate revenue, decrease costs. We came up with three ideas just sitting at the table yesterday, and we haven't even gotten started on looking at the departments to see what we can make run more efficiently. So, having said all that, it's been a real struggle for me, because, as it has with both Jerry and Chris, because we don't want to see our residents struggle. So, I do believe that we need to be fiscally responsible, but I also believe that we have our backs against the wall as new commissioners to try to fix a problem in three weeks that's been created long before us. And, I have always said, even when addressing the issue of reassessment during the election, that I always feel that I need to proceed with caution and take the, what I would call the humanitarian approach, and proceed with caution when it comes to our most vulnerable residents, the elderly, those on fixed income. And so, for that reason, I'm going to work really hard this year. And, next year at this time, I'm going to provide a list of all the things that I and my fellow commissioners have done to try to generate revenue and cut costs. It's not the most optimal way to proceed, but in my opinion, it's the lesser of two evils. So, in order to protect the residents, which, in my opinion, is our first and foremost obligation as elected officials, I'm going to vote no against the tax increase.
Tom, the, I keep hearing 11%. So, you know, can you explain that a little bit better? You know, it sounds like we're going to be paying 11% more on our entire tax bill. I mean, the average cost?
Okay. The average assessed value is somewhere between 12 and $13,000. It's that value of the average property in Lackawanna County presently, which also speaks to the horrible position that we are in with our assessed prop, our assessed values. $12,000 is nowhere near the fair market value of property in Lackawanna County, but that's what the assessed value is. If a property is assessed at $12,000, then the 6.5 mil, 11.5% tax increase would amount to $78 in additional tax for a taxpayer in 2020 as opposed to 19.
Of every dollar of tax revenue, what percentage goes to the school district? What percentage goes to the city? And what percentage goes to the county?
Well, it varies, as you well, are well aware, Commissioner, because of-
Generally.
-varying rates of tax in municipalities and in school districts. The county is the one standard, but typically, we estimate that the county tax portion of a county taxpayer's bill is in the vicinity of 15 to 20%, potentially another 30, 35% for municipality, and then approximately 45 to 50% for the school district.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I just, you know, I just think it's irresponsible to kick this down the road any farther. I just don't see, we've talked about it, we've talked about it, I've lost sleep over. I mean, I'm not supposed to be the guy up here voting for a tax increase, you know, but this is gone on too long, you know? As far as we talked about reassessment, I can tell you right now, I will not vote to initiate a tax reassess, that, I'm not even going to consider that.
I just, before we put in the vote, I'm not trying to act irresponsible. That's not what I'm doing. I'm well aware of the issues. But, alternatives, in my opinion, should have been explored to try to reduce the impact on the residents, especially the residents of the city. So, I'm going to work tirelessly to try to do as much as I can to reduce costs and increase revenue. So, it's not that I don't recognize our fiscal responsibilities, it's just that at this point, three weeks in, I need an opportunity to do something, and I'm not willing to put people out of their homes three weeks into my administration.
I agree with Commissioner Dominic in that we have to address this further and find places where we can save money. But, the timeframe we were allotted made it necessary for us to act this month so that the tax bills could conceivably go out. It did not give us the opportunity to look into them as we would have liked to and find places where we can conceivably save more money. So, I think going forward, we certainly do plan on doing that, and I think we will be successful. And I think, you know, and I understand, it was not on my list of things to do. Again, like I said, I probably pay more real estate tax than most everyone in this room. But, that being said, I certainly don't want to do this either, but the county does not, the largest, uh, receiver of the, of the tax dollar, and we will be, you know, much more fiscally responsible going forward, but our timeframe was very limited, and this is what I feel we needed to do at this point. So, at that, you know, it's-
Well, if it pains me to do this, I'm going to vote yes. And I don't, I don't want to, but it's the way it goes.
And I will vote yes also. Thank you.
A motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is it over, or are we going to speak about the public?
Um.
About the public?
Oh, sure. Thought everyone kind of did. Okay. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Ready? Ralph Antedormy, Madison Township. It's part of Lackawanna County, up on the end by Wayne County. I'm living a dream, but I wake up, okay? And standing there, poor, don't live at my house. I'm probably the oldest guy in the room here. I'll be 81 years old. Worked on my life, me and my seven brothers, right? Not hard times. Everybody don't have a pension. Good if they have it. Good if they have it, fine, but you got a hell of a surplus there. Use the surplus. Don't raise the taxes, like Mrs. Dominic said, and then work on it. Maybe it'll come out better. How about cutting some jobs and spending? You know what I mean? And we didn't need this crazy store here. When we're building stores up on the hills and all that, we should have kept this. Now, you got five, six million dollars you got to spend, Mr. Notariani, besides, right? On this place here, it isn't done. Shouldn't have ever been. Maybe everything should have been on a referendum and have the majority of the majority, not the majority of the minority. It's like a school board. It's the majority of the minority. They don't ask you if you want a new school or raise taxes. They just do it. The majority never rules. Let's have the majority rule. You guys got a hell of a job you're blessed with. Maybe we need reassessment, because some people, $12,000, you know, Mr. Durkin here, he got pros and cons, but he's not scaring me. He might scare some people. You got people paying a hell of a lot more, assessed a hell of a lot more than $12,000, right? I mean, you got a portion of the seniors that have no pension. I have no pension. I don't care. God bless you if you have one. But Standard &amp; Poor's don't live in my house. I don't care what they think. You got pros and cons with Mr. Durkin there, but I don't go for it. I'm not very smart, but I'm not stupid either, okay? We may need a reassessment. Some people are getting away with, like Harmony Hills up there. One time I did a survey up there, they weren't assessed enough. And the poor people in Madisonville in turn hurt from paying more than they were on their $300,000 homes. I mean, something has to be done. Cut some jobs, do something, cut some spending. The dumbest move they ever made is buying this glove store without the people wanting it. I mean, hey, God bless you. Everybody has a critic. Everybody is a critic. If you don't like what I'm saying, that's fine. You got your opinion, I got mine. It isn't how much money you have, it's how much money you spend you don't have, right? And I'll tell you what, everything I think should be on a referendum to help you people out, because you got a hell of a job to do. I hope I'm not forgetting nothing here, right? I don't want to raise my county taxes because you don't do nothing for me. We got volunteers up there. How about giving me a job at 81 years old? Give me one of them creamy jobs. I didn't work eight hours a day and go to sleep every night. I worked day and night until a truck got tired, until I got tired. Everybody don't work eight hours a day and depend on a pension or the store. If you don't do the job yourself, you shouldn't be working. Happy New Year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Fay Faranis, is this mic on? Fay Faranis, Scranton. I'm one of the people that could lose my home because Scranton taxes are going up, county taxes are going up, and school taxes are going up. What Mrs. Dominic said was very true, every word of it. Mr. Notariani, you bragged basically twice that you pay more taxes than anybody else here. You know what does that tells me? That tells me you live in a very expensive house and get lots of money. We don't, I'd like to be able to say I pay more taxes than anybody else in this room, and you're proud of it. I'd like to have your money.
It was a letter to the editor in the paper this morning.
You said twice that you pay more taxes than anybody else in this room.
Have an effect on me. I don't, I am not wealthy. I've been working since I'm 14.
I don't need to hear, but you said you pay more taxes than anybody. You're proud of it. You know, I wish I could pay more taxes, and that would mean I'd live in a house like you and get all the money that you get. Where have you been for the last four years? No input from you for any budget, no attending any budget meetings. You're quick to run out of here today. It is true.
It's not.
And when you did speak, you didn't have anything to say. Do you remember when Mike Washo was minority commissioner? He had everything to say. He explained everything to the people. He explained everything clearly, and he let everybody know what was going on. He worked for the people. Were you the county commissioner that said you didn't care about Scranton? Mrs. Dominic said, you said that's not your problem? That was probably you who doesn't care about the people in Scranton.
If I can interject, neither commissioner said they didn't care about the city of Scranton. That is not what they said.
You said, no, it wasn't their problem.
That it shouldn't be considered in making our decision.
It should be, and I thank you for saying that. But Mr. Notariani apparently isn't any of your concern about these people. You're not here for the people. You're here to take care of your friends. I don't know who they are, but you're here to take care of them. And Mr. Schirmack.
That's not true.
You know, this is going to be your legacy. You want this to be your legacy that you're going to make people lose their homes?
Sometimes tough decisions have to be...
It's a tough decision, well, then change your mind. It can't be too tough because you're doing it. You'll sleep tonight very nicely because all your friends will be taken care of, too. I know, I don't trust Mr. Notariani one speck. One speck. He's not here for the people, he never will be here for the people. When are you going to be for the people? When? You're quick to run out of here. You were very, very quick to run out of here, weren't you? You didn't even want the public to speak. What the heck's the matter with you?
I'm not the one called for the adjournment.
Pardon me?
I thought we were ready to adjourn. That's my fault. I just think we should keep the comments to the agenda and not the insults towards the commissioners.
No, uh-uh. That's not, insults to the commissioners are due. You're public servants. I have every right to say anything. Freedom of speech. When I don't think you're doing a good job, I'm going to come here and say it. Mr. Notariani and Mr. Schirmack, you are not doing a good job. And if I have anything to say to any county commissioner about the job, and when there's a regular meeting about everything you could talk about, Mrs. Dominic, I have plenty to say to you, so...
I'm well, you can call my office.
I did call your office, and I didn't get a returned phone call.
We've been busy, but I...
Where have I heard that before? You're very transparent.
It's been three weeks.
So what?
So, I'm trying to get to my phone calls as soon as I can.
Well, I'll be waiting for mine anxiously.
But there's only so many things I can do.
But I'll be here to address the next...
There's Brian. You can give him your name today, and I'll call him.
I gave you my number. I talked to your answering machine. I gave you my number. I don't have to go to Brian.
He's my assistant. He schedules for me.
Is he the assistant that you hired?
Yes, my assistant.
The one that we don't have qualification, we don't have a right to know the qualification for, even though we're paying you salary? We don't have the right to know the qualification?
First of all, we're going off topic. Second of all, we respond to the right to know.
I know, but you brought it up.
If you want to ask me questions, we can schedule a meeting. I have no problem doing that.
No, I'm going to do it here.
But the onslaught of insults is unnecessary, and you're beyond your five minutes, I believe.
No, it's not. When you do something wrong, you don't like the insults, then you shouldn't be in public service. If you were a regular private citizen, I wouldn't have anything to say to you. But if you're in public service, you're going to take all the abuse you get. Mr. Notariani, you're a horrible commissioner. Horrible commissioner. You don't care about any person in the city, anywhere.
I don't agree with you.
You know, go home and live in your mansion with all your money coming in, and then not worry about the people. We'll be lucky to be able to scrape enough money to pay our taxes while you don't have... Oh, you pay the highest taxes than anybody in the room.
That's the same problem.
Brian?
Anyway, we live in Scranton, many of us, and anybody in the whole county should be considered. You should be taking care of the people in Lackawanna County, period.
And that's exactly what we're trying to do.
And it's not what you are doing.
That's your opinion.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hello, Joan.
Joan Hoda-Wan, it's 101 Penn Avenue, Scranton. Are we having fun yet? Okay, everybody calm down. I want, you know, I've been coming here, meeting after meeting, and I always say to Gary, Gary, what are the legal fees yet? You know, what are the salaries, right, Gary? I want to tell you something. One of the first things he did when he came in as controller was he set up a fraud, waste, and abuse hotline. You remember that, Gary? And it paid off. And I'm here to tell you that as you relook budget issues, and you're not going to do this overnight, you need to look very carefully at fraud, waste, and abuse. What are our numbers, Gary? $1.8 million in legal fees for the prison investigation, and God knows how much in salaries.
I did double check.
Yeah, but we're over the $2 million mark, I'm sure.
It was since the last time.
Yeah, but you put in salaries, we're well over the $2 million mark. There's a man to talk to about internal controls, okay? So, you're going to find, I think you're going to find a lot of cost savings. You mine that man's expertise because he's an excellent controller, in my opinion. Let me mention the 800-pound gorilla that no one's mentioned, and I'll mention it. I think one of the reasons that taxes weren't raised in the last few years is because some people wanted to get reelected, and no new taxes was an election mantra, okay? And I think to do that, you have to make sure, you know, that you're playing with those numbers. When you have a structural deficit and expenditures exceed revenues, and that's year after year after year, are we putting in realistic numbers in the budget? I know, Tom, you said you're very conservative with the numbers, but where are our expenditure overruns, other than fraud, waste, and abuse? Where are our revenue shortfalls, okay? And you need to drill down on that. You're not going to do this overnight. So, stop worrying about what happened today. This is going to take you all four years, okay? It's not going to be an easy thing to do. But I don't like having my taxes raised. I'm in the process of selling my property, okay? Not largely because of taxes, because I'm a 70-year-old woman with no husband and children, and I want to be independent, so I'm going to have a good landlord, and I'm going to say one ringy dingy, two ringy dingys, and I don't have to worry about contractors or anything else. And I'm going to pay for that service. I live in Samters, okay? And it's not cheap. But, you know, I would love to have a freestanding home with an Olympic-sized swimming pool and all the amenities and everything else. I don't have that. I don't own a car. I don't have cable TV. I don't even have the damn internet, because I have to, you know, manage my finances. I'm retired, okay? And I, you know, I get cola whenever, you know, cola comes out, but a lot of years, cola never comes out. And I bought my first car in 1978. Cost me $5,000. Would you please tell me where I can buy a new car for $5,000 this year? I'd be lucky to get a good car for $30,000. You know, I'm just telling you, I think people, yes, they don't like the idea of taxes, especially if you're a Scrantonian and you're getting hit with the triple whammy. But on the other side of the coin, you're very naive if you think that costs are not going up and eventually taxes are not going to go up, too. I'm just surprised that they got away with it for so long. I don't know about you, but my utilities have gone up every year. My insurance has gone up every year. All my, I mean, eating food has gone up every year. Getting new shoes, because I walk all over town, you know? Every time I have to buy a new pair of athletic shoes, it's gone up. But my revenue doesn't go up that dramatically, you know? So, I don't know. Mr. Notariani and Mr. Schirmack?
Excuse me.
Okay. I'm just going to tell you that I know it took a lot of intestinal fortitude to take these slings and arrows. It's unfortunate that you got stuck with having to do it. Move on.
Thank you. Thank you.
Marie Schumacher, I'll be very brief, because frankly, I, at this point, I'm old enough to remember the commercial, and I've got a new Excedrin headache, and it's been here. These figures, I think they've changed from the last time. I don't understand, I don't think there's enough detail for anybody to look at this and understand how something that was passed in 2019 in November has changed so drastically. I don't know what happened. Nothing this drastic happened in my life, I know. And I just think it's, I just wish I could understand why you're doing this, and I can't from this material. And I hope you do better. And Mr. Schirmack, I hope you, I don't know if your mic is even on, but you're very hard to hear in the back of the room, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
First of all, I just want to say congratulations to the first Democrat female ever elected as a county commissioner. Congratulations, Debbie.
Thank you.
I did not want to go to your inauguration and steal your thunder, so I wanted to make sure that I came in, and maybe we can go to lunch. I'll buy you lunch, and I think that it's appropriate for the first Republican female to congratulate the first Democrat female.
I appreciate that.
So, very nice.
Very much.
And great honor. We'll be a team. I just have a few questions on the budget. The $8 million. Tom, could you explain where the $5 million is coming from for the Globe? Because the numbers I got off of you last time don't match up, because we have a $1 million allocation from the governor, 1.6 million from the sale of our old building, and you have allocations in here for the Gateway Center, which we had $1 million from the insurance company for that. So, I'd like to know where those costs were, if you could do that. Anytime that you want to sit down with me, I would be happy to. So, I'll call, and I'll meet with each one of you. There was an article in the paper, sorry, I'm a little bit upset because we have a tax increase. There was an article in the paper stating that ghosts of the past. I've been coming to this podium since 2007. Tracy Hart can verify that. There's never a time that I won't be here to watch over what the county's doing. That's what I did before. I'll do it after, and even if I run for a different office, I'll always be here, because I don't agree with the tax increase you're passing, and I don't agree with this budget. So, if I can get those questions answered, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you. And as for the 5.8, you still have time to work on that, just so you know. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Now I move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.